Call of what this mean Iowa Department. School district board of Trans. Tammy, would you lead the question?
Yeah, I want to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Lord, this attitude continue to lead and guide us. Lord, in the direction that she would have us for what's best for our district. Lord, again, I just thank you and ask you for guidance and protection for our district. I thank you for all of our students and our staff and our administration. Lord, and Lord, this attitude continues to give us strength. Lord, during this time, and I would spend trying and troublesome, Lord, and and this attitude be with us. Lord, as we continue tonight to do what's best for our district, Lord, lead and guide direct us. And these things I ask in the name. Amen.
Joe, anybody signed up to speak? Everybody, okay. So we'll move on to four consideration of consider agenda.
If you don't mind, before we go to four, I just want to speak real quick. It's January, it's four appreciation month. I want to thank you personally, board members, for giving of your time freely. This is because you love our community, love our district, love our kids, it's why you serve, and so I want to thank each one of you and say that I appreciate you. You have some goodies in front of you, different things. I don't know, Mr. Fowler, Mrs. Sedzuski, if you want to explain what you put up here.
Sure. In the jars, those are jellies, strawberry jalapeno jelly made by one of our special education teachers, Holly Watts. It's delicious. It's the best over green cheese, so very, very good. And then there is a book that is dedicated in your name to the Iowa Elementary Library, and so they will be on display this week. And this during have been processed in, and they will be available for checkout after that. And it's based on kind of your personalities, what you like. Hope I got right.
Strawberry does it hats up for COVID.
Jalapeno. So we did very similar. We had our Ms. Inman and her class make you guys some cupcakes and some cookies, all within COVID regulations. We also donated some John Gordon books, John Gordon books to our library in your name. Each of them will kind of, kind of represent y'all, and it's, he's an inspirational writer and a motivational speaker, and so we thought it would be, you know, you guys inspire us to do the things that we do, and we're inspired by the work that you guys do. So we thought that would be a good thing for us to donate back to the school in your name. So thank you guys very much for your, your time.
If you open them up, you'll see the little dedication sticker.
Yes, ma'am. So they'll always be known as these are dedicated in your name.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. That was a great idea they came up with. That was all our alternative, and I apologize, I'm going to leave my mask on. I'll try to speak as clearly as possible, but out of respect for the board members and our, our community members, I've been out with COVID, and I want to make sure I keep everyone here safe. So I'm going to leave it on tonight. Normally, I would remove it. But yeah, in an attempt to keep you guys safe and healthy, you know, usually we have 50, 60 handmade elementary cards and all kinds of things that would carry lovely germs with them, so we, we shift some gears, and I think this is an excellent, was an excellent idea by our principals, and it will leave a legacy with each one of your names in the library. So again, we thank you, we appreciate your time. Sorry.
No.
I, I should have circled that I was going to speak.
Okay.
So now we can move to the board.
We're at the consent agenda, and we did have edit.
Yes, sir. We have, we had two edits after we printed the minutes and put them in the packet that were brought to our attention. You should have a corrected version in front of you. One was a date change in the first sentence. I believe the incorrect one said November 26th, and it should have been November 16th. And then we had down to the nomination of vice president, our incorrect notes had Mr. Pointer nominating Ms. Mallett, and that should have been corrected, or it was corrected, and it was Mr. Cunningham that nominated Mrs. Mallett. So we made those two corrections, and with those corrections, I would just ask that the board approve this consent agenda as, as corrected.
Make a motion. Wait two seconds for president.
Motion second by Ren, those in favor, raise your hand. Mr. Carrie 70, item number five. Campus administrative boards.
Mrs. Sedzuski, ladies first, as usual, please.
All right. So this is kind of our, right now, we're wrapping up that middle of the year, big data harvest that we do for K through seconds finishing theirs. That'll be done till the end of the month, and third through sixth will be next month. So y'all have some good data, I'll perform some good data starting next month when we meet. We started formal observations, and after returning back from Christmas break, we've had two families who withdrew to pursue a homeschool virtual network. They returned, so we've gotten two families back, and we also have gotten around eight to 10 new students since then also. We're going to have two more enroll tomorrow or sometime this week. So thank you.
A lot of great things going on at the high school. So I want to go ahead and make you guys aware, so our yearbook, every year, Ms. Testin does a fantastic job with our yearbook. And last year, we were acknowledged for having in the top, I don't know, 200 yearbooks in the country. We got acknowledged like an honorable mention. We're just in the list. This year, we got notified by Balfour that we were selected by Balfour as a featured national sample, and that we will be featured at workshops and by Balfour representatives, and we were recognized, and I wish Kyrton was still here, recognized as an outstanding yearbook team. So we're a small 2A. These are schools that have tens of thousands of dollar budgets for their yearbooks and stuff, and so that's a great honor for us, and we're very, very excited about the work that they're doing, Ms. Testin's doing in that yearbook class. She's doing a really great job. One act play is they're doing their tryouts coming up next week. They're looking for volunteers right now. I'll do want to come in for that. That'll be exciting whenever they get that play going. Basketball, boys and girls, they're both tied for fourth, or well, boys are tied for fourth, and girls are in fourth. So the boys game against Snook has been temporarily postponed for tomorrow, so it is just the two girls games. And the JV will start at 5:00 tomorrow here at Iowa, and then varsity will play after that. But the boys Snook game will be rescheduled for a later day. I do want to talk about some of our featured teachers. We have that spotlight that we teach our spotlight each month. This month with Mr. Ferguson, and I'd like to kind of say what the kid said about him. So as one student said, Mr. Ferguson is Mr. Ferguson. Need anyone say more? There's not much that this teacher will not do to help his students both inside and outside of the classroom. He is a great teacher who makes this class so much fun. Furd may be his name, but being cool is his game, according to many students. Honestly, you obtain the title of being cool by a secondary student, you're fifth of jackpot by a teacher, right? The student, the students want to say thank you to the teacher who always makes my day better, makes me laugh even when I'm having an update. So congratulations to Mr. Ferguson for being the teacher spotlight of the month this month. Then we have a student, so they call it the spotlight, Bulldog Spotlight of the Month, and that was Brooke Smithy, so congratulations to her. And then just an update, volleyball girls got to order their rings about a week ago, so those will be coming sometime soon, so we're very excited about that.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Thank you, Mrs. Sedzuski. I have a number of things here, board. I've baked you on some, nothing major, minor informational things. The first one I want to let you know is we've picked up an additional fraud prevention with Wells Fargo, who we bank with. It's $56 a month. It covers money transactions and check protection. And the reason we did that, since, I don't know, August, September, October, the service center has been asking us to pay one of the bills they sent us, and we paid it the month they sent us, and we found out just before Christmas break that someone had managed to take that check and cash it, and the service center did not receive it. Now this, so the reason we've gotten this fraud protection, we're still working to, it was a check for $1,400 to the service center. We're still working to get that money back, but Wells Fargo lets us know with this fraud prevention, it would be an immediate reimbursement once we discovered that was an issue. So I'll let you know, we're covering our bases there now. We're also, we're continuing to work with Dr. Tammy Cruz and Texas Impact Network to develop our teacher incentive allotment. I want to thank Mrs. Sedzuski and Mr. Fowler, there was a January 15th meeting that they set in for us and for our district, and our future meetings are the 28th of this month, and then February 10th and 17th of, well, obviously of next month, February 10th and 17th. So we're continuing to develop our teacher incentive allotment plan, and we'll keep you apprised of that. On December 15th, we had all the superintendents that are represented by Ben Lamond had a Zoom meeting with him. Topics of discussion were districts asking for the state to continue to hold harmless ADA through the spring. We asked about reading academies. Some of the federal reimbursement programs, Ben said at like 75%, so we're asking why is 75% he's working on that? Issues with CCMR were brought up, so I think we've shared this before. One of the issues around the state is that some districts were fudging their numbers with how many kids had actually enlisted in the military. So the state knows that's a problem and is working with CCMR. As we pass our CCMR goals tonight, it could look different after the next legislative session, but that was discussed, and then lots of superintendents around the state are concerned about the state or about state relying on district fund balances to help cover this budget deficit that's headed our way. So every time we've been in front of a representative, we've shared that that's not a good idea. If you understand school finance, you realize that fund balance is what pays the bills in those in between months. So if you didn't realize that we get money from the state in August and September, oh, I'm sorry, September and October, and then August at the end of the fiscal year. So to get you through there, we obviously have our local taxes, but our fund balance is what helps pay the bills when, when the revenue's not coming in. So we're hoping the state doesn't touch that. On January 12th, I had a phone call with Open Road Renewables, our 313 agreement, just a little update there. A company called Anell Kansas is now in control of that project. As Fred Stormer shared with me, who was our representative with Underwood Law Firm, this is just another step in the process. So essentially, you just have another company that has fought over the rights to this project, and it's moving forward, actually, it's moving forward so much that Anell, Kansas is talking about construction possibly beginning 4/21, so I guess April 20th of 2021 instead of October of 2021, which was on the schedule. What that may change is our limitation period by whole year. So we move it from January 1 of 2023 to January 1 of 2022, and Fred and I have reached out to Chris Grammer to see if he needs to do another financial assessment for that. Also want to let you know that we are switching services. Our current financial advisor is Mr. Louis Wilks with U.S. Capital Advisors. In my three years as superintendent, I've communicated with Mr. Wilks just once, so I have decided to switch to Mr. Lucas Jonda, who is with Live Oak Financial. Lucas is someone that has reached out to us several times. The big thing I like about Lucas is that he served in the business department for Forney ISD for many years, so he's actually done the school side of the finance and understands all that it ins and outs. Just so you know, just vetting who we're going with, North Zulch, Normangie, Madisonville, Richards, Snook, Somerville, New Waverly, Lovelady, Leon, and Centerville are all happy with Mr. Jonda and the services they receive from him now. So I felt very comfortable making that change for our district. Received an update from Mr. Steve Pierce, who is our financial forecast person with the service center. What he sent us, remember, if you remember, I told you each, at the end of each six weeks, he updates our financial template, so we received the third six weeks template update. Again, our whole harmless ADA that the state gave us throughout the first semester was 516. If you remember, we submitted ADA for funding purposes, which was 503, and our actual ADA at the end of the third six weeks was 496. Our summary of finance has us at, for our state aid, has us at 2.4 million, and we had budgeted 2.2 million in our budget, I believe. In their summary of state and local M and O revenue, it has us at 5,594,604, and that is just $16,346 less than what we put in our group budget. So it sounds like we're on track there, we're on target. And then the last thing I wanted to let you know, speaking of ADA, of course, the state wanted us to give them our projections for the next biennial, and that was due in December. So I submitted to the state a new ADA for budgeting purposes, a new biennial of 510, and so again, I refer you back to the 496, which was our actual ADA for the 36 weeks. So I think we'll be on track there. And that is all I have for the superintendent report.
Item number six, consideration resolution of the board regarding extension of time for use of emergency paid sick leave.
Yes. If you remember, legislation that was passed by the state as school was starting, which allowed us to, or allowed school employees, if they were out for COVID reasons, whether they tested positive or had to quarantine, they could be out for 10 days, and those 10 days would not go against their personal or state leave. They were just essentially getting 10 free days, if you will. That legislation expired at the end of December, and we're doing what many districts have done, or I'm asking the board to approve it, that we just extend that legislation. So that's what this resolution would allow us to do, is extend that to our employees for the rest of this school year, meaning if someone's out for COVID, they are still allowed 10 days before it starts going, taking away from their strength and personal leave.
And a local resolution can affect the state, do you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're, we're, one of the last sticks around here to actually get to this resolution. A lot of people did it in December.
Can I ask one question about this? Just the numbers, you said we've had 28 employees out of COVID for an average of five days? I thought our, our policy was 10 days to be out. How, is it, was it around the holidays, some of them come in?
Yes, sir. That's why it worked out that way. And again, this was, these numbers aren't accurate now. I can think of at least two employees that have been out for at least a full 10 days since this was printed. But as, when we looked at this data, as we started working with this resolution, those were the correct numbers. And that's why, because it fell around holidays.
Yeah.
So just ask the board to approve this resolution so we can continue to extend that to our employees.
This is just for this school year?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Alec, is that you? Second by Alec. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 70. Item number seven, consideration of resolution regarding special education shared services agreement.
Yes, sir. So as many of you know, sit on the board of trustees for the Grabs County Special Ed Co-op, and each district that is serviced by the co-op has, their superintendent sits on that board. What's, what's in your packet is a resolution to our SSA or shared services agreement, and the reason each district in the co-op's decided to do this, when we have our monthly meeting, there are things that we've had to bring back to our boards to get board approval, and then we take it back the next month to the co-op board meeting, and we're finding out that some of these things are taking two to three months because not all of our districts have board meetings at the same time of the month. So actually, a co-op meeting was just last week, and some of the things that came up, they've already passed the other districts' regular meetings anyway. So that things can happen in a timely manner, this resolution just allows me to act on behalf of Iowa ISD. So when we need to pass something as a co-op board, I don't have to bring it back to you to get your approval, and then take it back to them one or two months later.
Can you give us an example of the kind of things that are not, are getting slowed down?
Like SSA agreements.
Okay. Just the agreement.
It's numerous, yes, sir. It's numerous items, but I remember our SS, our new SSA agreement took more, took longer than it should have. So with that being said, just ask that the board approve this resolution to our SSA agreement with the Grabs County Co-op so that I can vote on behalf of Iowa ISD, and we don't have to bring things back and forth over a two-month period.
I move to approve the resolution as presented. Second by Tammy is open for discussion. Our discussion, those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 70. We moved eight down here since we were five ago in the phone sessions.
We can, yes, sir.
No, we're not in and out.
That's fine.
We'll move number nine up, and consideration of approving the district's required HB3 board goal.
These are the HB3 goals that we've been talking about. Again, the date goes back a year. We were in the process of getting them ready to approve last year, then COVID extended everything for us, including the deadline to, to get these HB3 goals passed. As you know, these have to do with early childhood reading or third grade reading, early childhood math, which is third grade math, and then we get to CCMR goals for the secondary. For those that don't know, CCMR stands for career, or college career military readiness. The board has been communicating back and forth about these. I think the only remaining issue was the final number on CCMR for the year 2025. Mr. Fowler and Ms. Harris recommended 75%. That's why I left it at 75%, but we can open the floor to discussion.
Before we get to that one, I, I wanted to confirm some things, just to make sure that I understood what we were going to get back on some of these progress measures. And I really appreciate you and, and the other administrators getting all this information back to us, but so on some of those progress measures, we, we combined the K through two, right?
Yes, sir.
But on our reports, you're going to be able to report those individually by grade?
Yes, sir. We can even do those grade levels by teacher, if the board so chooses.
I, I mean, whatever everybody wants, but I just wanted to make sure that we, we have those by grade. I wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Yes, sir.
And then also on that report, because the progress measures themselves don't have the early third grade stuff, you said that the, the third grade scores on those assessments we could get in those reports as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't, see, I don't have the early childhood reading in my packet. Do you all have reading in that, and you all have to be friends?
I do.
Literacy plan, yeah.
What do you have?
Goal one.
What is that for? Reading, see, I don't have reading. I have math and CCMR, and that's all I have. Oh, we all get it? I don't have that. You have it. No, reading.
I apologize, Mrs. Fowler. It's the same, it's the same getting mills.
I got the others.
Just a, a little bit more, because I, I'm obviously not as familiar with this as everybody else is. We, we talked about the nonsense word fluency and letter sounds, and, and this is the one I have the biggest question. You said that that was a subtest in M class, the weakest K through two subtest in M class. What does that mean?
That just means that in that M class assessment, there's lots of different areas that they test. They'll test phonics, they'll test nonsense words, they'll test reading accuracy, and that's just one of those subtests. So when, when I look at all of those different subtests, what did our students score the weakest in?
Okay.
And it was not.
It was our weakest, not the test is the weakest.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was the, the lowest areas, the, the most improvement needed was in that area.
But the composite score gave the whole text.
Yes. Yes.
So could we have a report when we have our meetings also on the entire composite test score?
Absolutely.
So we kind of know where they're standing for the whole test.
For sure.
So that's all I had on the, on the reading and math. I don't know if you want to split them up and go into the CCMR up here, what else is?
Well, we'll, we'll take one vote, so if you want to address, we'll, we'll vote on it as a, as a pact of deal, as our HB3 goal. So if you want to address CCMR, you can.
So the, the CCMR, we've got a baseline of 71. In our five-year goal, that's 71% of the, of the seniors in that, in that group will graduate CCMR certified, and in five years, we're going to get that up to 75%. So I, I know that this has been postponed a little bit, but when, when the first round of these goals were created, what was that baseline? It's 71% now.
It's 82% with the graduates of class of 2018.
And what was the goal, the five-year goal? We didn't.
Who's the first year?
This was first year.
It was the 92%.
Okay.
It was the 92%.
So the original.
Your goal started 82, and it was going to go to 92, because I, I mean, yeah. Originally, it did 82, and then it was going to be 84, 86, 88, 90, 92.
And what year was that?
It was, it was the one that we had, that was given to us before. Then we didn't adopt the goal. We would have adopted the goal if we had everything ready. So it's for 1718.
Was that like the 1920 that you're saying?
I'm saying it was for, I'm saying it was for 1718, was 82%. That was the goal that we had before. If you look at previous goals that were given to us for CCMR, that was the original goal, and they were lowered because of recent data, right?
Paper results, yes, the paper results from 70.
So, I, I mean, do, do you agree that the five-year goal that y'all had originally presented went from 80, 82 to 92?
I think that was the original.
That was, based on the information from that year, that was a different group, and so there's a whole different program three years ago. So the program that we have now is the data that we're going off of, adjusting it from the data that we have now to that group.
So, so the issue that I have, and, you know, everybody up, up here knows what my, my opinion is, is if six months ago, a year ago, we, we had a baseline of 82%, and the administration was able to stand up and say, we have a plan to get to 92%, why are we saying that now the best we can do is 75%?
It's based on league data.
Well, I mean, every year.
I think, I think one of the things we have to keep in mind, too, with CCMR, is I have a hard time understanding why the state has this monitoring it. One, because it, it lags two years behind, the data that's going to be reported lags two years behind. And for us, a small district, you have a graduating class of 42 or 26. So even if the number of kids stay the same, that we don't reach in one of those categories, CCMR, our percentages are going to, are going to vary. So that's simply what it was, is we're looking at one class, one year, now we're looking at the most recent data, looking at that class and seeing what they did, and so we're basing our goal off that class. That's really the only answer we have.
So we had 11-point swing between two classes?
Mm-hmm.
So that shows how unpredictable it is.
That shows how unpredictable it is to begin with.
The class of 82 had 26 children, which is very rare. The data to the 82% was based on probably the class of 26. 2018? Is it 2017? 2017, okay.
But, I mean, the whole point of percentages is that it, it standardizes, you know, the number down, you know, yes, I understand the raw number's going to be different, but it's still 82 or 71%. I mean, the percentage is still the same. I mean, the percentage is still the same. I know that because we have small numbers, it's easier to get a swing. You know, I, I understand that. But I, I, I just cannot stomach saying that the state says this is what the kids need to be to be career, college, military ready, which to me says, ready for anything but entry level. And we're saying the best we can do is seventy-five percent. I, I mean, I, I can't stomach that, especially when we had a plan just a couple of years ago or a year ago to get it to ninety-two percent. And I, I look at the, the juniors that we have now, where the sophomores, the very first sophomore class that have dual credit available. One of the things that gets you college-ready is to have nine hours of, of, of dual credit. Most of those that are taking dual credit that has stayed in it are already, you know, and, and those weren't.
Qualified, yeah.
Those weren't in the old numbers. I don't know, I don't know if y'all had a chance to look those numbers up, if, how many have done that?
So it went by the current seniors, because those are the ones that'll be in our, the ones coming up next year. So we had ten currently taking dual credit out of thirty-one in the graduating class for this year. And then, um, so as of right now, there's only ten out of thirty-one that are meeting that college rating. Um, TSI is one of the big ones that you can do. So we're going to offer that to some of those kids that are going to go to blend. Because if we can offer that and get those test scores, then those can count for our CCMR. Um, but we won't do that until March, so.
Now, now, I, I just want to point out those, those seniors were only able to start taking dual credit as juniors, correct?
Correct, but we offered them the sophomore version. So they're still at the same track, they've taken the same classes.
So that they, they've been, they, they took two classes each semester as juniors?
Mm-hmm. They're sitting there currently at twelve hours.
Okay, that, that's what I wondered about.
I think another thing that's common is leaving about the TSI score, TSA scores. All, when you look at our STAR scores, our grades are really good for math and reading. Because we combine those two to get a credit, right? You pass math and reading or you get the other.
Right, you have to have both to get the CCMR.
So when you look at STAR and we think, wow, our scores are good. But the problem is that they get to retake in a course until they get more passing. And then when you go take this test, you don't get to retake.
You can retake, yes.
The test that for college?
Yes, ma'am, they can take it as many times as they need.
Okay, but apparently that, what are they going by on here? First testing or what?
Yes, and some of the kids will take it and honestly never choose to retake it. You know, you can.
But for our score to be thirty-eight percent for math and seventy-six percent for ELA, I'm not, I don't know how many times they've taken a test.
Correct, yeah. And sometimes they don't take it with us. A lot of times they will go straight to blend and they'll take it with them. But then that's why the data lags so far because they try to catch it back up to, to play some of the high school that we're in.
Well, you're talking about it lagging so far. I'm seeing that seventeen eighteen results are reporting on what year?
Which seventeen eighteen?
So I'm saying that, okay, seventeen eighteen and then eighteen nineteen, it's on the STAR, but then you don't get your actual rating until maybe the fall of the twenty or whatever. So it's not like it's that many years behind.
Let me, let me give you an example of this year because it's just easier for my grades. So we just got the taper report when December, okay? So that was based on two thousand nineteen graduates. It wasn't last year. It's two years behind. That impacts your kid taper report. That was the only thing I was explaining.
Okay.
So the only, the only grade levels we have to really impact are going to be the next three grade levels for that five-year goal.
Right. Well, I don't, I agree with that. Like, I don't believe that we should have our, our goals set low. I think we should always strive for better, for better for our kids and I don't think that we should have a lower. And then we can always look at it and say, well, this is what's happening. But I'm not sure what I was offered. But I see that our industry-based certification will increase from nine point five percent to twenty-five percent. And I don't know what's offered for industry-based. What's offered this year for industry?
Welding.
Do what?
Welding is the only thing currently we have a certification for. It has to align with the coursework and then you've got to have a certified staff person that can administer the test.
Right.
So the pathways we have right now that we're doing is welding. We're hoping, opening, next year we, the first year we're going to be able to offer, um, with Mr. Trent doing our business pathway. Next year will be the first time we're able to offer them two, which will go with the Microsoft certification. So that would be a whole nother batch of kids that's not your welding kids and not your dual-credit kids. So hopefully we can catch some more in there.
So we've been able to offer, add last year that certification or not?
Last year we did not because.
Because we didn't have anyone certified, right?
Right, well, and with COVID, we didn't get a chance to be face-to-face.
Okay, okay, so then, true, okay.
This was our first spring that we were going to get to and then we lost it.
Right, hopefully we get, true.
Yes, right.
Okay, well, I would, you know, so, and you're saying that, I mean, whatever Mr. Trent, what, something for computer?
He's doing a business information system.
Okay, so he's certified now?
He's working on that. This next year, he's been in the process of getting, figuring out what he needs to be able to get those kids certified for next year. But it has to align with courses, like different classes are the ones that you take the certification in.
Right, right.
And so, yes, he is hoping next year, we had a lot of kids take Ben One, which is the entry level this year. So with the second level, they're able to get more into the, the information that will help them pass that. I think they're going to be Microsoft Word experts.
So I guess that maybe we need to consider being able to offer more for our kids. Whether we want to join a co-op, something or goes to another town, whatever. We need some more options for our kids.
That's exactly, that's exactly. We're going to be able to offer. And so there's only so many kids that want to take just welding or anything like that. So that, that's what makes that, that, that number looks deceiving because you're like CMR, we don't have kids ready for college. But there's only very specific characteristics that go into what calculates that CCMR goal.
For that career.
For that career path, you know, we just, it's very difficult. Big, big schools have multi-different areas. They've got, you know, welding, we've got other, I mean, all these other different areas and we're just very limited. And we try to provide as much as we can, but we don't provide enough.
Right.
Have we considered looking at the, at the campus in Bryan like some of the surrounding districts have done?
Like doing a co-op?
Well, I mean, the, the district, Bryan has the, the CTE campus that they've, millions and millions of.
I agree with you there.
And they've got campuses all around us that are, that are having their students take classes there.
Snook, Richards.
Well, the feasibility is the time and the classes those kids have to have to graduate. You know, so they've got to take a certain level of classes. So if they're spending four periods a day traveling, you know, how do we account for that?
Well, how do other schools, that's what we just said. How do other schools do it?
You've got to have a person that travels to go monitor them. So we would have to have an additional person or time in their schedule that would go to monitor them in those activities.
Right, if they can work it out, we can work it out, right?
Sure, yeah.
If other schools can work it out, we can work it out.
Some of the smaller schools like Snook and then we need to check on, see what they're doing and how they're, how they're managing that. Because they're doing a really good job over there. You know, those little, they're, they're really feeding off Bryan.
They're real close to science. There's.
And I don't want to, I don't want to get into doing those jobs, right? I mean, it's not our place to tell you, you know, what, what to develop and how to reach these goals. You know, um, I, I just, you know, I'd like to see that goal a minimum of eighty percent, you know, and that's still lower than what we, what we would have stood up and said we've got a plan to get to, you know, if this goal had been adopted last year. So, I mean, personally, that, that's what I would like to see.
Do y'all have any objections to eighty percent?
Ultimately, they're y'all's goals, we'll do our best to meet them.
Well, I think you've got to put an asterisk behind it because it could be ninety-five percent or it could be sixty-five percent. I mean, it just, it's too.
We're always trying to add everything that we can to, you know, our staff and what we're offering our kids, being able to make those adjustments and just planning for that. I mean, we'll do everything we can to get you guys what you want.
It might be different to.
Do any board members have any issues with eighty percent? Personally, let's make it eighty percent. So eighty percent, then we'll just go backwards from there to come to the base? Or what, we have the base?
Well, I mean, I think the base has to be the seventy-one, right?
Seventy-one, well, it is eighty, yeah.
But I mean, even if you want to, even if you want to backload, you know, you know, do the one percent for a couple of years and then backload the others so that at the end of it, you're there, you know, because it sounds like that's what we're, what we're talking about.
Five, seven, eighty, so you start on twenty twenty-three, go seventy-five, seventy-seven, eighty.
Do one or two percent for the first two years we were doing.
Do.
And I would rather have a high goal anytime and just tell you guys that, you know, do your best and if you come real close and don't hit it, it's better than, than doing something we know we can hit easily and not pushing ourselves.
Well, if the community understands that too.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we're the ones that said it. And if we don't, if we don't give you the resources, it's our fault.
Okay, so in that, where it's got that statement where the goal three, do you leave that at seventy to seventy-five percent? Or do we change that wording on that?
Seventy percent to eighty percent.
Okay, because you said something about seventy-one percent.
Well, right, for the first year, has to be pleased from here for a year.
Okay, okay. Okay, and then you want twenty-three to read seventy-five percent?
Seventy-five, seventy-seven, and eighty. And will your GPS align on that still, I guess?
Yes, because it does, it does small targets by.
So if everybody's okay with that, that seems the, the biggest point of conversation with the blue four of a passing, if there's no other discussion. Motion by Tammy.
I'll say.
Second by Alec. Any further discussion? If those that favor raise your hand, motion carries seven oh. We're getting about ten bus. Per, uh, consideration, foster purchase of used or used school bus.
So we have a couple of things there. Obviously, the agenda item talks about purchasing a used bus to replace the bus that was totaled in the December accident. Again, just, I, I'm going to make this statement. I know the board is, is intelligent and understands this. If you were to approve the purchase of the used bus mentioned here in the packet, it would only be purchased after passing an inspection by Mr. Callahan. So he would have to go to where the bus is, look at it, make sure it's up to snuff, and then we would purchase it. The approval doesn't mean we're just going to pay that for the bus. A couple of things have come up during, during all this that we've emailed back and forth with. I put two quotes in there for you on different new buses. One of them was a Bluebird. You see, it was just over ninety-two thousand. And the quote from Longhorn Bus Sales, uh, that's for eighty-eight thousand one twenty-five. That is foreign international, I believe. I didn't see, I know Mr. Callahan told me, but it wasn't on that quote. So we have those things to consider as well if, if the board doesn't feel comfortable with the used bus. And then also in the conversation, a, a few things have come up about cameras on the buses and bus tracking software. So I emailed you guys this earlier today. Also printed it out so you can see it so we can refer to it. But, um, the, again, the floor's open for conversation about all of this.
Does any of these buses, will, will they have air conditioning in there?
No, these, these buses do not have air conditioning in them.
Should we look at some of those?
Uh, we can.
Because of, you know, in August or September on field trips and things like that?
Absolutely, I can get Mr. Callahan to get us, um, he, he can get us quotes for buses with ACs. Also, as we've talked about with the facilities committee.
I was going to say, when we go down that rabbit hole, kick those back because they were talking about that as a facility.
Yeah, we have, we have found where we can put air conditioning in our existing buses for nine thousand dollars advice. And that's sitting with the facilities committee right now and our additional three hundred something thousand dollars for capital improvements.
I would say the same thing for cameras because what y'all are talking about doing is creating a survey where the, the.
Yes, sir.
Facilities committee comes up with a survey to send out to the community. Community responds, then they, then it comes back to us. So let's see what they want instead of us hashing it out. I mean, whether we want AC or camera, let the community tell us what they want. That's simpler.
Sure, and just a little more detail about, um, the tracking software. Essentially what it does, um, it tracks students when they get on and when they get off the bus. I'm assuming that they would need to have a student ID, something that would be scanned when they got on. So it enters into the system and then they would scan when they got off. So God forbid we ever had another accident. We would know, the computer could tell us instantly who was on the bus, who had already been dropped off, who didn't even ride for that day. Because in December, that was, that was an issue too. There were kids that were absent and never got on the bus that afternoon. So to figure that out was, was interesting. And so anyway, you see the prices of some of these things. You can see the cameras. And there's a big difference between two of those. Mr. Callahan didn't get into that with me while there was a, a big difference in the camera prices. Um, and then you can see the, I think, the tracking software. Mr. Pointer even, this, neither one of these was the ones you saw, correct?
Yeah, I, I simply looked for something that exists, to prove to myself that it existed. I, what I sent you had no bearing on anything that I thought. Uh, I just wanted to know that something existed with that kind of functionality.
Sure, so we can continue to monitor that stuff. And Mr. Bees, like you said, if you want, we can bring it to the facilities committee.
If the board's okay with that, it just makes more sense to me to kick it back to them.
Well, and.
They're, they're working on the very thing right now.
We need to run it through that anyway because that's where the, the funding would come from. It has to come from that, um, that assigned fund balance. Because we didn't budget for these things for this, with this year's budget. So anyway, but I want to make sure we addressed everything you wanted to address, Mr. Pointer.
How many buses?
And again, leave the floor.
How many buses are there that would need, that if we did?
We run, we run six buses a day. And I think we have seven buses, seven or eight that are route or trip-ready.
So we'd have to do eight just in case one's down?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So that's something to keep in mind, is how many buses would have to be equipped for all of them.
And we can, I'll work and work on that and get those numbers to you. So with the used bus, um, yes, it, it shows that it's a twenty sixteen and the bus we lost was a twenty eighteen. Uh, but actually, when you look at the bus that we lost, it's stamped manufactured in twenty sixteen, but the title says twenty eighteen. So this used bus and the bus we lost were both manufactured in twenty sixteen. I don't know why the title says something different. Mr. Callahan looked for twenty-seventeens also and found none. And he had the theory that they did not exist because it was during that time that the law was changing about seat belts in buses. So I think companies manufactured in twenty sixteen sold what they had because the new law was coming into place. So none of those manufactured twenty seventeen and then they picked up again in twenty eighteen. So again, here's the information for the used bus. And Mr. Callahan, again, after inspecting it, thinks this would serve as a replacement and would fall very close to what we're receiving from the insurance company.
Do you know how many miles our bus had on, on it?
And I apologize, Mr. Evans.
Well, I'm just saying, this one here is a twenty sixteen. It only got fifty thousand miles on it? That's nothing for a.
I think.
It has two thousand more miles than our red bus had.
Yes, that is correct, that's what...
Now, personally, I'd rather spend the money on a new bus, because with this lower price of eighty-eight, I was already figuring that for twenty-five thousand or so, twenty-five thousand, six hundred, whatever, we could have a brand-new bus.
How long would it take to, is it a timing issue on getting a new one? I know the last one, we ordered them, it was a long time before we got them.
I'd have to ask Mr. Callahan, but, um, I can research what a new bus costs, what a new bus with AC costs, and get you guys the, the information, and if we need to have a call of meeting to purchase a bus, we can do that. If we don't, if we don't wanna go this route.
Are we currently hurting because we're not without that bus?
No, sir, not at this stage.
So, did, did, uh, not having this bus, uh, contribute to the, to us using a, uh, one of the older buses for the Mumford trip the other day with the junior high girls where they, they had a breakdown?
Uh, I'd have to ask Mr. Callahan, I don't have the answer to that.
So, I, I mean, I know that, uh, Mr. Callahan said that, you know, as long as they're properly maintained with the diesel engines, you know, the, it's gonna be, you know, body problems that cause us to stop using it instead of engine problems. And, you know, I'll, I'll defer to his expertise there. I, I just wanna make sure, I know that we had, you know, uh, a couple of breakdowns where, where kids have gotten stranded and had to send another bus to get them, or borrow, like last year, we had to borrow one from Centerville to get home. Uh, and, uh, unfortunately, that one had air conditioning, but the kids just keep asking about it now. Uh, but, uh, I, I, I wanna make sure that those are just issues that we should expect because they're school buses and we put a lot of miles on school buses, you know, and it's not because, you know, we, we've got older buses.
But I think our travel buses, our buses on our route, we put all three new buses on routes, right? They're not travel, we, to me, we should have our newer buses to travel, but that, I don't know, I don't know that much about it.
Mr. Callahan has been instructed to pull those far travel.
Okay.
But, uh, anyway, the, you know, we, so we purchased, so beside the rec bus, we have two newer model buses that are on route.
Yes, ma'am.
Not for travel, not for that.
No, they get pulled for travel if we need them for travel.
Okay.
Different bus and the older bus.
Can you clarify that, please?
I will again, I know I've, I've given him that directive many times, but I will clarify it again tomorrow.
I just had, I've had some questions...
Sure, absolutely.
This, in, in the last year and into this year, that maybe that wasn't happening, maybe they didn't know what they were talking about, but...
Yes, ma'am.
There's been questions about that.
I will make sure it's clear again tomorrow.
About the travel buses.
The new buses, yes.
On the used bus wouldn't have led it, so what was the thought process behind pursuing that avenue versus new?
Just he felt like it would serve the purpose, that it's about the same condition as the one we lost, and, uh, with just within a couple of dollars of, of being what we're receiving from the insurance company.
So you're gonna have some depreciation right when you first, you know, pull them off, so...
I promise you, I don't make it to a year without a bus breaking down.
Yes, I mean, some of the breakdowns are...
Yes, that happened when I was in school, when Will was in school, and my daughters, I mean, it's, it's gonna happen. That's, that's too many buses, and our routes are not the easiest routes to run, and we gotta use our buses. I mean, we gotta, we don't have the fundings to have us, a bus sitting out there that, that's our travel bus. I mean, they kinda gotta, they kinda gotta work, too, so...
If the board so, so chooses to go with the new bus, I will get quotes as quickly as possible. Like I said, we can have a call of meeting for the approval of purchasing it, if that's the route you guys prefer to go.
But the used bus, we could get that relatively quick.
I'm okay with the used bus, but if everybody else wants to split the bill, what's going to do?
I, I would do whatever the board tells me to do.
I wouldn't mind getting a little information on the turnaround on the new bus. I mean, if, if we can get a new bus and we're basically only putting another twenty-five thousand dollars into it, instead of waiting four or five years and having to buy a new one to replace one of the older ones anyway. I mean, i- i- it may not, it, it may not be what we end up doing. You know, I, I, I think that the, the new, or the used one, you know, I trust Mr. Callahan, but he, you know, he has done the homework and he knows what he's talking about.
Well, the old bus had, the, the new bu, the old bus, if you're thinking about purchasing, has sixty thousand miles on it.
And our old buses had fifty.
And our other bus, you know, it had fifty thousand one hundred seventy-two miles on it.
I can tell you, I see that, uh, the Longhorn quote shows an estimated delivery time of forty-five to sixty days.
We're gonna pass on that then and let, let's go get that information together and call a meeting?
Yes, sir, that, that's fine, yeah, I, I would definitely, you know, it's whatever the board chooses to do. Uh, like I said, this was the quickest... This was the quickest choice to replace it, was with the used bus, and, and the cheapest to replace it, but I have no problem getting that information to come back to the board if we have comparison. So that's a good, um...
Just take no action?
Just take no action.
And, and then the other stuff, we're pumping to the facilities committee.
That's my understanding.
Sounds good, sounds good to me.
Get it in the survey you're on, too.
Sounds good.
And then on the new one, would you just have him just to see what the AC was?
Yes, ma'am, because we'll go with these two quotes, and then we'll get, uh, quotes from those same two companies, or, or the bus with AC. And it will, uh...
Like, how much would be much difference to, if the facilities...
No, I just, I'm going...
Options added, or just get in on the new one?
I'm gonna push the board, though, that if we buy a new one with AC, then we make sure we spend the nine thousand dollars a bus to put it in at least two more, um, because I don't want it to be the person to explain to the band parent why the football got the AC bus, or the volleyball parent, if the band got the AC bus. That's just not going to work, so we need at least three, um, for football, volleyball, and band, because they all travel at the same time. And then in the spring, we would have, um, track teams and softball teams, and so I just understand, if we go with the new route with an AC, I'm coming to you to make sure we put AC in at least two other buses, if not three, just to cover that base. But, uh, no problem, no, that, I thank you for your direction, and, and we'll get that information to you as quickly as possible, and we can get a call of meeting, uh, and get that done.
I'm just putting no action on that one.
Right.
We moved it, uh, back to item number eight, principal's report on probation, probationary personnel, and we go to closed session.
Yes, sir, if we go to, we're gonna go to closed session, uh, under zero seven four, uh, personnel matters, so that's covering the probationary, uh, contracts, it's also covering my evaluation. But we're also going to be in closed session under zero eight seven for student safety, uh, because I'm going to talk to the board about approval of new guardians, additional guardians for our district. So we'll be in a closed session for both those categories. Good. Thank you all for being here, we appreciate it.